I'd like to call the May 21st, 2024 meeting of the Buncombe County Commission to Order. Thank you all for being with us this evening. Let's begin our meeting with a pledge of allegiance. Please rise and join us in the pledge. I would like to announce that there is parking validation for any members of the public using the county's parking decks or use public transit to attend the meeting this evening. You can get the validation from one of the deputies who is working here this evening on your way out. I want to read the ethics reminder to the board. In accordance with the code of ethics adopted by the board, all county commissioners have a duty to obey all applicable laws regarding official actions, to uphold the integrity and independence of the office, to avoid impropriety in the exercise of official duties, to faithfully perform the duties of the office, and to conduct the affairs of the governing board in an open and public manner. Is there any item on the agenda, the outcome of which would have a direct, substantial, and readily identifiable financial impact for any board member? Does any board member have a financial interest in any public contract coming before the board today? There being none, all board members have a duty and obligation to vote on any matters voted on by the commission at our meeting this evening. Commissioners, we come to the consent agenda. Are there any questions about any items on the consent agenda? Do any members of the public have any questions about any items on the consent agenda? Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda and to follow the remainder of the agenda as it's published?
No.
Second. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Okay. We now come to the public comment period. The time limit for individual comment to the board is three minutes. There's one person that has signed up to speak, so I'll call on this person, and then after we do that, if there's anyone else who wants to speak during public comment, I'll ask if anyone else wants to speak as well. There's three minutes to speak to the board. There'll be an orange light that comes on when you have about 30 seconds left, and a red light comes on when your time's up, and we do ask that you discontinue your public comments once your time's up, as we want to give everyone the same amount of time during public comment. All right, Buffy Fowler. Hi, and come on up to the podium, please. Thanks. Yes.
Thank you for your time. I'm here today because of a phone call that I received last week from an employee at the Buncombe County Health Department. I'm the operations coordinator at Francine Delaney New School for Children, and this phone call that I received made me aware that all of the school nurses in the Buncombe County Charter Schools will be removed as of June 30th, and that we will no longer be served by a school nurse. Right now, Francine Delaney New School for Children, Evergreen Community Charter School, Asheville Peak Academy, and Arts Space Charter School has a school nurse that provides critical support for students and staff. I'm really worried about our school without having a school nurse next year. We have students that rely on her, that are type 1 diabetics, that we need daily support from our school nurse. We have a student that was identified as type 1 diabetic mainly because of the school nurse seeing what was going on with that child, and the list goes on, and I don't intend to use up the entire three minutes to tell you what our school nurses do, because they do a lot. And the fact that we are going to be facing having our students in school and teachers being responsible for medication management, diabetes management, seizure disorder management, and all kinds of management that they did not have in their responsibilities now, we're adding another huge responsibility to these teachers. I just ask that if there's anything you can do, I'm a little confused on where this budget cut is coming from and why this cut's being made, but if there's anything that you can do to help support our schools and not lose our school nurse, I would appreciate it. Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, are there any other members of the public who'd like to address the board during public comment? All right. We have one item under good news, and we want to acknowledge that Victoria Espinoza has been recognized as 2024 North Carolina APOCO Telecommunicator of the Year, and Derek Rubel, our Public Safety Communications Director, is here to help us out with this item. Come on up. Thanks for being here.
Good evening, Commissioner.
Good evening.
Derek had a family emergency, so I'm filling in with him.
Sure.
I'm Alex Knight, I'm the Business Manager for Public Safety Communications, and I wrote a little something about our Employee of the Year, or sorry, Telecommunicator of the Year, Victoria Espinoza. Today, we gather to celebrate an extraordinary member of our team, Victoria, who has been awarded the Telecommunicator of the Year by Apco. This is a state award, so literally thousands of people are entered, and she's the one who won. She received this prestigious award for her exemplary handling of an officer-involved shooting, demonstrating her ability to manage high-stress situations with composure and efficiency, embodying the spirit of excellence we strive for in our industry. Victoria's been with us for about three years, and in that time, she's shown remarkable dedication, skill, and resilience. She was recently promoted from Telecommunicator 2 to our Training Specialist as a testament to her exceptional capabilities and on her wavering commitment to the mission, and I just wanted to mention, in these past difficult years for our telecommunications industry, Victoria's been a beacon of positivity and professionalism. She's a valuable member of our team, and I just ask everyone to please join me in congratulating Victoria.
Victoria, great job. Way to go. Thanks. Thank you so much to both of you. Congratulations, well deserved. All right, we have several presentations. The first is Recognizing Motorcycle Safety Awareness Month, and Commissioner Terry Wells is going to help us out with this item, and I think there might be some other folks here as well on this. So feel free to come on up and join Commissioner Wells. And once Terry reads the proclamation, if you guys would like to share a few words as well, you're welcome to do so.
County of Buncombe Proclamation Motorcycle Awareness Month. Whereas Asheville and Buncombe County motorcyclists have banded together to actively promote a more positive image of motorcyclists, promote fair motorcycle legislation, and to ensure motorcyclist freedom, whereas these motorcyclists are also working to eliminate prejudicial attitudes toward motorcyclists and promote participation in public service programs, and whereas these motorcyclists organize and participate in motorcycle safety, education, and rider training programs, and public awareness programs, and whereas the Buncombe County Chapter of Concerned Bikers Association of North Carolina and American Bikers for Awareness, Training, and Education has requested that the month of May be proclaimed Motorcycle Awareness Month, and whereas the board feels that it is in the best interest of all citizens to promote motorcycle safety awareness and to foster a sense of brotherhood and sisterhood among all of the users of our county roadways. Now therefore, be it proclaimed by the Board of Commissioners for the County of Buncombe as follows: That the month of May 2024 be proclaimed Motorcycle Awareness Month in Buncombe County. Residents of Buncombe County are hereby encouraged to join area motorcyclists in an effort to increase motorcycle awareness and improve traffic safety. This proclamation is effective upon its adoption, adopted this 21st day of May 2024 by the Buncombe County Board of Commissioners. Signed, Brownie Newman, Chair of Buncombe County Board of Commissioners. And now I'll invite Steve Inslee here, who is one of the chapter members, to say a few words.
Thank you, Commissioners. We have quite a history of this. We've been doing it for a long time. It goes back to Bill Stanley, and every time he would present this, he would always talk about his Red Harley. And I actually remember that motorcycle because he was my brother's football coach, and thank you. Western North Carolina is a motorcycle destination. I volunteer out on the Parkway at the Visitor Center, and over the years, I'm sure I've spoken to at least a dozen people from other countries who have come to western North Carolina to ride not just the Parkway, but all of our roads, and of course, they did a study out at western Carolina several years ago about the economic impact of motorcyclists, and it was up in the millions, tens of millions, because these people come in and, you know, they're buying fuel, they're buying lodging, and of course, they're enjoying our food and beverage worldwide reputation that we have, and arts and crafts, and everything that they do. Our state group several years ago had the part of the driver's ed curriculum needs to include now, and we had it put in, that one hour of their 30-hour bookwork is included in motorcycle awareness. And here in Buncombe County, we're able to put an instructor in all of the public driver's ed classes, and we're in all the county high schools, the Asheville High, and some of the private high schools also. We have billboards up, there's one in the eastern part of the county, and one in the western part of the county, and one on I-40, and we're reminding people that someone I love rides a motorcycle. And again, we're trying to make the public motorcycle aware, and we thank the Commissioners, and we thank Buncombe County for doing your part and helping us out. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Steve. Thanks for being with us. Appreciate you. We also have a proclamation recognizing Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month, and Commissioner Parker Sloan will read the proclamation, and Dr. Noriel Armstrong is here on this item as well. Thanks for being here.
Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month. Whereas Buncombe County is committed to reflecting the concerns and needs of the Asian American, Native Hawaiian, and Pacific Islander communities, and whereas Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month seeks to honor and recognize the contributions of Pacific Islanders, East Asians, South Asians, Southeast Asians, and West Asians, and whereas Asian Americans and Pacific Islanders have played a significant role in America's history with their enormous contributions to science, arts, industry, government, and commerce, and whereas traders from the Asian-Pacific region reached North America as early as the 16th century, but the first significant wave of immigration began during the late 1800s, and whereas Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month originated in a congressional bill in June of 1977, and on March 28th, 1979, President Carter issued Presidential Proclamation 4650, proclaiming the week beginning on May 4th, 1979, as Asian-Pacific-American Heritage Week, and whereas the month of May was selected as it honors the immigration of the first Japanese residents to the United States in 1843. And whereas while May also marks the completion of the Transcontinental Railroad in 1869, constructed by the labor of mostly Chinese immigrants, we recognize Chinese laborers were paid lower wages than their white peers, and some faced physical abuse from their supervisors. And whereas while the population of people who identify as Asian or Pacific Islander in Buncombe County is just shy of 2%, the artistic, culinary, and educational contributions are immeasurable, and whereas through our values of respect, integrity, collaboration, honesty, and equity, we honor AAPI individuals and stand in solidarity with the AAPI community as we work to dismantle systemic racism, and whereas a vast diversity of languages, religions, and cultural traditions of Asian Americans and Pacific Islanders strengthens the fabric of American society and our Buncombe County community. Now therefore, the Buncombe County Board of Commissioners proclaims May 2024 to be Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month, and urges our community to join together in celebrating our residents' Asian and Pacific Island heritage, and in making this period of rededication to the principles of justice and equality for all people.
Thank you, and I would like to bring up Thomas Robinson to accept the proclamation on behalf, and he currently works for Buncombe County in library services, and so I will turn this over to him and say a few words.
Hello. Good evening. It's a pleasure and an honor to accept this proclamation for one of the groups of citizens who makes living in Buncombe County so very interesting. I mean, I just want to give a little shout out to the Wong's, and to the Patel's, and the Kim's, both the Korean side and the Vietnamese side, as some of it is the people who I've known and come across who've really made Buncombe County what it is today. So thank you very much. It's an honor and a pleasure.
Thank you. Thank you for being here. Appreciate it. Okay. And we have one more. Commissioner Amanda Edwards is going to be reading a proclamation recognizing Mental Health Awareness Month in Buncombe County.
This is a County of Buncombe Proclamation for Mental Health Awareness Month. Whereas Buncombe County recognizes the bravery and resilience of those living with mental health conditions, and we show our gratitude for the dedicated mental health professionals and devoted loved ones who stand by them every step of the way. And whereas Mental Health Awareness Month was established in 1949 to raise awareness about mental illness, research, and treatments, reduce the stigma associated with mental illness, and celebrate recovery from mental illness. And whereas Mental Health Awareness Month helps people recognize the ways mental illness impacts their lives, connects people to available services, and highlights ways to advocate. And whereas in 2021, approximately 30% of Buncombe County residents were receiving treatment for mental health. And whereas the Buncombe County Child Fatality Prevention Team raised awareness that suicide is currently the leading cause of death for 15- to 24-year-olds in Buncombe County, and supports initiatives to raise awareness for the 988 Suicide and Crisis Lifeline. And whereas Buncombe County continues to support access to mental health resources for individuals who are uninsured or underinsured, and whereas Buncombe County is currently collaborating with other organizations to support initiatives around building youth resiliency and supporting local crisis centers. And whereas Buncombe County Services connect those in need to mental health services. And whereas through our values of respect, integrity, collaboration, honesty, and equity, each one of us has a role to play in changing the narrative and ending the stigmatization of mental health issues. Now therefore, the Buncombe County Board of Commissioners proclaims May 2024 to be Mental Health Awareness Month, and urges our community to join together in observing Mental Health Awareness Week/Month. We can start by showing compassion, so everyone feels free to ask for help and learn the warning signs of emotional distress and suicide. Signed by Brownie Newman, Chairman, Board of Commissioners.
And so I would like to bring up Anh Chuong, who is a licensed clinical mental health counselor and a licensed clinical addictions counselor and a national certified counselor, who also works for the Employee Assistant Network, to share a little bit.
Thank you. Good evening. I want to first thank the Buncombe County Commissioners, leaders, and my Buncombe County community for acknowledging the importance of mental health and wellness. I am honored to accept this proclamation on behalf of the amazing clinicians and mental health workers in Buncombe County. It is important that we continue to hold space and have conversations around mental health and work to de-stigmatize seeking mental health support. I would be remiss if I didn't acknowledge that true wellness and healing happens and is rooted in community. I am happy to hear that Buncombe County is committed to fostering and creating communities where folks can truly be well. As a part of our commitment to addressing the mental health crisis as a community, we must first acknowledge the systemic issues at the root of this mental health crisis. Although it is apparent that there is a critical need for more well-trained and competent mental health workers due to the increasing demand and burnout, therapy and mental health treatment will just be a Band-Aid for a deeper wound if we are not willing to address the systemic inequalities and injustices. We must examine and commit ourselves to true equity and dismantle barriers for services and support. Remember, there is no such thing as a broken person, just broken systems. Thank you again, Buncombe County, for your continued commitment to addressing inequality and inequity, as well as your commitment to the systemic change of the way we view mental health concerns. And for those who may be struggling with your own mental health, I want to leave some words of wisdom. Nothing in nature blooms year-round. It's okay if you are not blooming or currently struggling, and I hope that you receive the nutrients and support you need in order to bloom to the fullest when that time comes. Thank you.
All right. Thank you so much for being here. Appreciate it. All right. The next item on the agenda is an update from the Buncombe County Planning Board.
Good evening, Chair, Commissioners. Nathan Pennington here, your planning director. Just wanted to introduce Nancy Waldrop. She's our planning board chair. She works very hard. I'm going to advance the slides for her and let her give you an update on what the planning board's been up to.
Sounds good.
Good evening, County Commissioners and staff. Thank you for taking the time to hear from the planning board this evening. On the slide in front of you, you will see the members of the planning board. There are nine of us. There are two very new members, Jay Moreno and Carl Coon, who do have some previous experience either on the Board of Adjustments or with the planning board itself, and we have a very wide range of diverse backgrounds on the planning board. And at the bottom, you will see the purpose of the planning board, and that is to serve as a legislative board that makes recommendations on land use ordinances to the Commissioners, including but not limited to the Buncombe County Land Development and Subdivision Ordinances and the Buncombe County Zoning Ordinances, applications for rezoning requests and text changes to the zoning ordinance, and also subdivision ordinances which are heard before the planning board before being reviewed by the Commissioners. In Slide 3, these are activities and accomplishments which begin with May of 2023. That is when we recommended approval of the 2043 Comprehensive Plan, and the planning board wholeheartedly approved and supported the goals set forth in this plan based on the community input gathered. And again, enough can't be said about all the work that the planning staff put into gathering this information and putting it together. And in July of 2023, we started streaming meetings on public input, and that has made a big benefit to the public available. In December of 2023, the big project began, which was a text amendment discussion to align amendments with the 2043 plan. The planning board was excited to do this, and we had realized the need for some time to update ordinances, especially those related to growth and development, to better fit where we are now, as reflected in the 2043 plan. We began this discussion with a focus on STRs, or otherwise known as short-term rentals. In January through April of 2024, we were focused primarily on short-term rental text amendments. We held two public hearings or listening sessions prompted by an initial meeting in December with an overflow crowd, resulting in the decision to provide a larger venue and more time for speaker and public input to be heard. So this involved finding that larger venue for holding two more of these multiple-hour hearings, which we did have at AB Tech Ferguson Auditorium. In addition, we conducted four work sessions with the planning board and the planning staff to form possible text amendment proposals. In doing so, the more discussion we had led to the conclusion that the situation was too complex to rush, with too many ramifications and unforeseen consequences, and too many misperceptions by the public largely due to too much misinformation being circulated and promoted, making it seem kind of fruitless to put forth a package when we had so many questions and reservations left unresolved. As a result, the planning board voted to table or defer making any recommendations to the Commissioners for at least 100 days. However, there is no intention on the part of the planning board to forget about STRs. We do feel very strongly some regulations are needed to be enacted and to possibly find a better way to accomplish this than we have used previously. But whatever we do going forward, we also strongly feel to be successful in gaining public confidence and acceptance of any action on short-term rentals, we will need to, excuse me, we will need a group effort which includes interested community stakeholders sitting at the table, and the ability to enforce whatever ordinances are adopted. And on our last slide, we have the math amendments highlighted for 2023 and 24. Lake Eden was a routine rezoning. Biltmore Farms was a more complex issue. It illustrated the push and pull between environmental concerns outlined in the 2043 plan and the economic concerns voiced in the 2043 plan as well, and required two meetings to arrive at a decision to recommend rezoning as requested. The Longchamp Business Center was also a routine rezoning, and it's worthy to note that the 2043 plan has replaced the former land use plan as our guiding document. The 2043 plan is a much better guide and is much more inclusive of needed factors, such as the growth, equity, and conservation framework, which is proving to be most beneficial in meeting community needs and goals. These items are now built into our consistency statement, making it necessary for us to consider when evaluating the appropriateness of any request we are hearing and impossible to leave out. Any request we are hearing as a result is more thoughtful and has more thoughtful policies and actions which are better in tune with the community. And this sums up my comments, and if you have any questions, welcome to try to answer them.
Thank you, Nancy.
Yes. Thank you, Nancy, and to all the members that are serving on this, because you all have put in a tremendous amount of time, and thank you all for being willing to have all the public meetings as well, several of those around the short-term rentals, and listen to all that public comment. Sincerely appreciate all that. And I'm just curious, you mentioned, and I just want you to elaborate on it, you mentioned to move forward that you feel, or the planning board feels, that you need to have stakeholders at the table, so can you just elaborate on what you're speaking to there?
Yes, I'll be happy to. In all those hours of public hearings, and we were happy to do that. I mean, it was quite the learning experience in many, many respects, and I do think that we truly felt or truly heard from the public what was on their minds, both in favor of actions to have regulations for short-term rentals, as well as why people were so against it. But it also became apparent that if we were going to come to any kind of consensus or happy meeting ground on what those actions needed to be, that people from the Realtors' Association, people from organizations such as, excuse me, Mountain True, and I don't usually talk this much, excuse me, and just the public in general, like communities like Emma Potter, that all of those people had a vital interest in what was going on, and how STRs affect one of those groups, it's not how it affects the other. And that's where the conflict comes in, in my opinion. Regulations in some areas are desperately needed, I think. In other areas, STRs are just fine, but to get again to that happy meeting ground where people understand where they're needed and where they're not, is going to take more discussion, I think, than just what we have had so far between the planning staff and the planning board. We've heard the-- We've heard the issues from the public. We know what those are, and now I think to get down to the really nitty-gritty of this issue, if we really want to do something with it, it's going to take a more concentrated conversation, just like it did on the Steering Committee for the 2043 plan. And I wouldn't recommend a committee that big by any stretch of the imagination, but somewhere maybe between five and 10 people, in my estimation, is what is needed. And I also happen to be staying at a short-term rental over the past weekend in South Carolina, and in South Carolina, the laws are very much different than they are here. But one of the things the manager of where I was staying, and that was like a garage apartment STR, said was that when, that the rules that got enacted, and this was in Beaufort, South Carolina, when those were put into place, they did have that group effort, and that people came away very satisfied with the result. And everybody may not have been perfectly happy with everything, but they were happy enough. And again, I just truly think if we're going to do something that's meaningful and worthwhile, that we're going to have to have that sit-down session. I don't know how that gets accomplished, but I do think that's what's needed.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? And is there going to be someone sort of representing the, like, the need for more housing or housing supply in that stakeholder session? Because that's, you know, I think for a lot of folks, like, that's the fundamental concern, right, is like, we have an affordable, and not just like a technically, meaning the technical definition of affordable housing, but like, we have a housing crisis in our community, right? So who's going to represent that concern?
And definitely that should be addressed, yes.
Okay, good.
So a question then. Who would actually appoint this steering committee? Is that something that we would do or that they'd do at the planning level?
It seems like it should be.
I don't think that's something that we've really baked, fully baked yet, or had a discussion about. Right now, the planning board just came off a series of having extra meetings for six months, and we just haven't got that far yet. That's something I haven't really broached with management or had any sort of discussion yet at this point.
So is there a plan to bring something back to us at some point, then, some recommendation around that?
We could do that, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioners, I mean, I would be interested in that. I just, I served on the planning board for six years, and rarely went into this much detail on something, and I feel like they've taken it as far as they can, kind of gone above and beyond. So it's time for us to kind of help shepherd the process forward, in my opinion.
Any other questions or?
Can I ask a process question? To Parker's point, typically the planning board would hear something and make a recommendation, and then the commissioners take it from there. That did not happen at this time. So are you asking if the committee, for lack of a better term, should go to planning board for that discussion, or should that then come to you guys to really shepherd that process forward? And this is just a process question, because typically as the planning board does their thing, recommendation comes forward, and then you guys debate, deliberate.
It's a good process question.
It is a good question. I can share my thoughts. I guess I thought that planning board or staff would bring a recommendation to us around this steering committee, let's call it that, and then what would that process be? Would that process then go to the planning board us? That's what I'm asking for. What are kind of the considerations and the thought process?
I think in my mind, and I was viewing it more as a task force since it's short-time limited, so that's what I've been calling it, is to follow the normal process, that the planning board would work with that task force and then go through the same channels that they just did before bringing a recommendation to us. We've got a well-established process with the planning board and how things get to us, and I hate to get, to muddy the waters in the community as we're going through another challenging task force process for folks, for it to come directly to us to begin with.
I kind of agree, Parker. So what are your thoughts?
Yeah, I mean, this is the first I'm hearing of a new committee idea. I guess I just feel like the planning board's done their work. They've heard the community out in a variety of ways and done a fantastic job. And so it's time to kind of move this to another arena in my mind, whether that's a task force or whether that's us or a combination of the two. I don't know. They've clearly reached an impasse, so to speak, in their work.
Well, I mean, they've taken a lot of public comment. They've been looking at policy options, right? But they actually haven't completed their work yet. Like, I think their work is complete once they make a recommendation to us, and they haven't made a recommendation to us yet. So they're, you know, it sounds like they still want to, they want to think about this a bit more, dig into it deeper, right? So they do still have some, I think they're still midstream on this, right?
Okay.
So it's a good time to get an update. I do, my feeling is that, like, you know, the planning board can probably select the folks they feel like are appropriate to kind of provide this additional community discussion on this policy issue, right? Kind of outside just like the normal process they use. So I don't know that, you know, that they necessarily need our help on that yet, although, you know, it is this process where, you know, things go through the planning board, then they come to the commission. But, you know, we adopted a comp plan. It talks about these issues in the comp plan. I mean, we've identified affordable housing and the larger issue of housing supply as like the county commission's number-one issue, right? So I think the commission definitely has a role in this, too. So I think if you, my recommendation would be if you have thoughts about this process, we communicate to Nancy and the members on the planning board and kind of share our thoughts with them, and they will hopefully take our ideas into consideration, just as they're taking all of these additional community ideas into consideration that they're hearing. You know, maybe, for example, like, yeah, who's going to, who's going to speak up for the folks who don't have a place to live in our community, right? Like, because there's not necessarily a group or an interest group for that, right? So who's the voice for, you know, for that perspective? I think that's really important. And if there's others that you want to make sure are at the table, then let's, just, you know, let our colleagues know.
You know, I would like to caution us, let's not get too many cooks in the kitchen. I think the planning board has done an excellent job, and you all can take this and then bring it back to us when it's ready to go. And if we have any input, we can give it to them. But I don't want us to get too far in the weeds when they've been working on this for how long now?
Since last December.
Yeah, yeah. So let's let them bring it to me.
And I didn't mean to open a can of worms, but I did feel, because we have, the planning board has put so much time into this, and everyone took it so seriously, and we, and it's not like that we didn't have anything we could have proposed. I mean, the planning staff worked really, really hard to come up with some text amendments that we all voted on and basically agreed were okay, but there still was this, just this big question mark of, is this really going to go anywhere? And are people going to just be more confused in the process of all of this because so many things were left unaddressed? So, and it's not that there aren't things that I think that we could go ahead and pass. I mean, there was pretty much, even with the Realtors, unanimous consent around restricting it in STRs and mobile home parks and places like that, as well as on the Blue Ridge Parkway and the steep slope overlays. There wasn't too much, again, controversy with that issue. So those things, I think, we might could go ahead and do if you want to do it more piece by piece. But it was the hugeness of what we were trying to encompass, I think, that scared a lot of people, and it also made it much more difficult because one thing feeds into the other. And things that might affect, or homes that might affect affordable housing in one neighborhood aren't necessarily really going to affect affordable housing somewhere else. And those were the kinds of things that got like, well, it's not either or, it's and. It's what do we do with all of this? And that's where it became so really, really murky. And that's what the planning board was feeling. But however we go about doing this, I just feel like that, and the planning board felt like, and I asked them before I came here to give me their feedback, if I'm giving the right message, that we just really felt strongly, if we were going to have a successful STR plan going forward, we needed community input, and I just really wanted to bring that to you so you could tell us what you either wanted us to do or to take it for yourselves and do what you saw fit with it.
Okay. So maybe, and I'm not asking you to do this tonight, Nancy, I think this has been a great presentation, is what we needed, but, I mean, I would like to kind of hear, just hear an update on like where things do stand. So maybe at some point, our planning staff could sort of provide an update to us on, like, what are the status of the different policy pieces that are being discussed? So I would find that, I would find that useful.
Okay.
You know, and, you know, my only other two cents on this is like, when this issue, you know, originated, like, I felt like this would be one of the hardest issues, not just that the planning department wrestles with, but that the county wrestles with. It's a tough issue, like, housing is a huge issue. It's, it's, it's not, it's not, it's a complex issue, right? So it's a tough issue, and I think we knew that from the beginning, but it's also, it is, you know, housing is one of the most important issues in housing supply that we face. So if there can be some additional common ground found, that's great. I think we know in a lot of issues, like, you know, consensus is probably not, not everyone's going to agree on every point, and that's okay. You know, we have a democracy, we have a way to make these, to make these decisions at the end of the day. But I'd love to hear an update on the ideas that are being looked at and being discussed so that we can have awareness on that, too. Other questions or comments for Nancy at this time? Okay, thank you for serving. We really appreciate everyone on this board. It's one of the really hard-working boards in the county, and so thank you for what you do and to all of your colleagues as well. We really appreciate you.
I will relay that, and I think all of us feel like it's an honor to be there, so thank you.
Great, thanks. Okay, thank you, Nate. Next item on the agenda is the FY 2025 budget message from our county manager, and John is here to help us out as well. Thanks for being with us.
Thank you, Commissioners, and good evening. I appreciate the honor opportunity this evening to present the fiscal year 2025 budget. I'm grateful to our department heads, our fire chiefs that I see there touring the room that are requesting a tax increase, and staff for digging in and helping to reduce expenses while continuing to deliver exceptional services to the community. For tonight's agenda, we will review our budget process, the current economic environment, highlights for 2025. By statute, our budget is adopted by function. We will cover those functional areas, review our capital improvement plan and our financial outlook. We will close with the FY 2025 budget and a review of our annual funds. Our budget process spans almost nine months. We meet with department heads and all budget support staff in late September, and they began working on their requests to maintain current service levels, as well as requests to expand service in response to demands or in events in our strategic priorities. Typically, in late November or early December, we have a public budget retreat with you all, where we discuss expenditures and revenue trends. This year, we focus on needed investments in our capital infrastructure. From that retreat, we take our guidance or feedback and work with our department heads to refine their requests. We then hold work sessions to discuss requested expenditures, projected revenues for FY 2025. We look at the current year FY 2024 year-end projections, capital funding strategies, and education requests. All of that work comes together tonight in the manager's recommended budget. This is staff's recommended budget, represented for your consideration. A public hearing will be held at your next meeting on June 4th on the recommended budget. When we presented the FY 2024 budget, we were facing several economic challenges: high inflation, housing affordability and supply, high cost of living. These economic conditions is also impacting FY 2025 budget, along with slow revenue growth, the reduction of American Rescue Plan funds, higher prices, low unemployment, and a highly competitive labor market. It would be an understatement to say that planning and projecting FY 2025 budget has been challenging. The economic challenges is reflected in the fiscal year 2025 budget by the slow growth in our revenues with only a 4% overall growth over last year, with a 3.52 growth in unrestricted revenues. To compensate for the slow growth and the uncertain economic times, we ask departments to take a critical look at their operations and scale back or delay any expanded services. This resulted in an overall 1% growth in county operations while maintaining continued investments in priorities. Per our personnel policy, the budget includes a cost-of-living adjustment for county employees at the two-year average of the Consumer Price Index urban wages, calculated at 4.89%. In North Carolina, local government budgets must be balanced. For 2025, to achieve a balanced budget, I'm requesting recommending a $0.25 tax increase, resulting in a tax rate of $0.52 per 100 valuation. The total general fund budget is $441.9 million. Education is our largest function at $126.2 million, or 28%. Human services at $96.7 million, or 22, is second, with public safety closely behind at 21%, or $95.3 million. These three functions represent more than 70% of the general fund budget. With the previously discussed economic conditions, this budget is primarily a continuation budget. We are continuing to invest in our core services, with targeted investments in advancing our strategic priorities. In our public safety function, you see continued investment in emergency services. I'm requesting eight paramedics for headcount only. No funding is recommended for FY 2025. This will allow us to advertise and recruit staff for a news station that is anticipated to come online in July, impacting FY 2026 budget. Continued investments in 911 communications, this is one area that has been hard-hit with staffing shortages. I am recommending continued funding for contracted staff and the design of a required backup center. In the sheriff's office, inflation is impacting the cost of jail health and mental health services through higher pricing. I am recommending two positions for the co-responder program and 20 replacement vehicles. Lastly, in the public safety function, I'm recommending two positions in justice services to support the Family Justice Center to provide stability and replacement of the loss of grant revenues. In $14.4 million in capital infrastructure as part of our capital improvement plan for emergency management basis and detention center repair and renovation. In the education function, I'm recommending an increase of 3.25 to Buncombe County and Asheville City Schools for current operations. After $0.25 tax increase proposed, .75 is being recommended to fund a 3.52% increase to schools. 3.52 is also recommended for AB Tech as well. This budget continues to contract with MEHEC to provide school nurses to both school systems. It maintains current funding for school resource officers and school capital projects. Additionally, support for early childhood program continues. In the capital improvement plan, we continue to support solar on school buildings. In the human services function, you may recall last December, we took over administering the low-income energy assistance program and crisis assistance from ambulance charities. I am recommending four positions to provide the necessary staffing to manage these programs. I'm recommending an additional position to handle the influx of calls and applications due to Medicaid expansion. Additionally, four positions are recommended to assume the administration of court-ordered visitation due to determination of previous contracts. Some of our contractors have struggled with staff shortages and providing the level of services that is required. In public health, the mobile unit that you all authorized in 2022 has finally arrived. We are continuing to support that team and continued support for agent services. Culture and recreation function is our libraries and park and recreation department. This budget supports for all 11 branches and the increased demand for digital and online services. I'm recommending one position for library services as part of their staffing plan to appropriately staff the branches. In park and recreation, continued support to maintain 13 county parks and five pools, as well as mobile services to communities not located 13 county parks and five pools, as well as mobile services to communities not located closed to our county park. We recently approved a grant application for the purchase of Devervee Mountain. As this proceeds, staff are beginning due diligence on this property. When the property is transferred for the county, we will bring forward an operational and staffing plan at that time. Additionally, we received $4 million from the TDA for the anchor recreation destination. This budget includes $450,000 as a grant match. We will continue to include funds in future budgets to provide a one-to-one required match. Economic and physical development is a group of departments that infect that impacts our built environment and economy. I'm recommending one position each in planning and permits and inspections. In planning, the position will be for the code enforcement team, and in permits for administrative support. Both positions address increased demand. One new target investment I am recommending is $75,000 for the code enforcement team. As they work on nuisance abatement across the county, this would allow them resources to outreach and help prevent condemnation. This, this $75,000, 50,000 of it is restricted revenues. So there's 25,000 from general fund that I'm recommending. In property management, one position for business property appraisal and continued funding for the revaluation reserve fund. Funding in the economic development set cost center is for previously obligated incentive payments. The general government function captures all other departments not included in a special grouping. In this grouping, I'm recommending two positions in general services: one maintenance technician specifically for the detention center, and one mechanic in the fleet division. Continued investment in facility renovation and repair and EV charging infrastructure. One position in human resources as we continue to invest in our foundation and to support all employees. And finally, one position in IT to assist in supporting the numerous software systems across the organization. Our last function is debt service. For fiscal year 2025, total debt service in the general fund totals 21.7 million. This amount is debt payments for previously issued debt. The capital projects discussed for the 2025 budget is not yet reflected in these amounts. The debt payment from other funding sources are school capital fund at 25.4 million, AB Tech at 6.6 million, and solid waste fund 2.9 million. During the budget process, we discussed establishing a capital reserve policy and corresponding fund. Staff will bring a draft policy for consideration. We expect to begin funding capital reserves in fiscal year 2026. To summarize, 30 positions are recommended in the general fund. Of the 30 positions, 12 come from fund, 12 comes with funding from terminated contracts, restricted or intergovernmental revenues. Eight positions are authorizations only for the future EMS station. The remaining positions have delayed start dates to minimize the impact on the 2025 budget. Again, this year, we recognize that not all positions will be filled 100% of the time. Therefore, we are not budgeting 100% of salaries. Based on our vacancy and turnover trends, we reduce salaries by 5%, saving $10 million for 2025. As mentioned earlier, our personal ordinance includes a formula to calculate the annual employee cost of living adjustment. That formula resulted in a maximum adjustment of 4.89%. Moving to capital projects, continues our investment in foundational capital projects. I'm recommending 10 projects totaling 25.1 million in debt finance projects. The largest project you heard from Eric earlier today at $10 million is replacement of a core public safety technology system. Additionally, we are partner partnering with Boncombe County Schools to equip some high schools with generators that would serve as area shelters as we begin to plan and build our community's ability to respond and cover and recover from emergencies and hazards. Planned capital projects recommended as PGO totals $1 million. This includes investments in facility repair, replacement of dryers in the detention center, and the first year match for the Phase 2 of the anchor recreation destination. The information technology projects being proposed will upgrade our county website, continue to invest in risk management software and contract management software and other technologies-driven solutions. Utilizing our vehicle replacement plan, we are debt funding debt public safety vehicles, as well as two recreational vehicles due to the outfit and equipment needed on these vehicles. This year, we're moving to a lease model for standard general fund, general government vehicles. We will evaluate this model and decide which model is most advantageous for our needs moving forward. So bringing all of those functions together, you see an overall increase in education, in public safety, in debt service, and in culture and recreation. Human services remains flat, and decrease in general government, economic and physical development, as well as other financing sources, resulting in a combined increase in expenditures of 1% in the general fund. Advance in our strategic plan. This graph provides the breakdown as to how the general fund budget is represented across our strategic focus areas. 86% of our budget is invested in our community focus areas: resident well-being at 50%, educated and capable communities at 32%, vibrant economy at 3%, and environmental and energy steward at 1%. The remaining 14% represents our foundation focus areas of operational excellence, resources, and equity. With the funding priorities and departmental budgets, I'm recommending a total general fund budget of 441.9 million dollars. To fund the 441 million dollar budget, the three largest revenue sources are property tax at 65%, intergovernmental 11%, sales tax at 11%. These three revenue sources represent 87% of revenues, or 376.4 million. With all revenue sources totaling 430.1 million, and expenditures recommended at 441.9 million, I'm recommending appropriating 11.8 million of fund balance and 2.55 cents tax increase for a tax rate of 52.35 cents. Beyond the general fund, in our other funds category, I'm recommending three positions in our solid waste fund, one heavy equipment operator, environmental enforcement supervisor, and an inspector. Additionally, I'm recommending a targeted investment of 180,000 to partner with North Carolina Department of Transportation to pilot a countywide cleaning initiative to remove litter along our secondary roadways. The 911 fund is a restricted revenue source. We will use these funds to partially fund the backup center and the associated equipment. Commissioners, all documents associated with the fiscal year 2025 recommended budget, 2025 proposed fee schedule are available with the day's agenda. The fiscal year 2025 budget explorer is an online tool, and the public can use to explore our budget in more detail. The next step is a required public hearing. The public is invited to share input on the recommended budget in person on June 4th, 2024, at 5:00 PM, at your next scheduled meeting, right here in this room, room 2, 326, 200 Collis Street. I truly appreciate and thank you for the opportunity to present the recommended budget for fiscal year 2025. I look forward to hearing your comments and feedback in the coming weeks as we move towards an adopted budget for fiscal year 2025.
Questions or comments?
All right. Thank you, Ms. Pinder and John. Commissioners, any questions at this time? As just outlined, we're going to have a public hearing at our next meeting. So this is, this presentation is one step in the process, but are there any questions tonight?
I have one question, John. Can you go over, I think you spoke to it some at our last budget meeting, but if you could go over it again. So with the schools, the 3.52% unrestricted growth rate, can you explain why we would need a tax increase if we're just going with that unrestricted growth rate? Because I would think typically, if we're going with the unrestricted growth rate, we don't need a tax increase on that.
So the unrestricted revenue growth rate is, that's how much our unrestricted revenues grew. However, we see the decrease of restricted revenues in, in governmental revenue? So with that offset, we don't have the funding available that we have had in the, in the past? So, so some of our unrestricted revenue must be, needs to also go to county operations as well?
Commissioners, um, the reason for the tax increase on education really comes down to the fact that for several years, we have been funding above and beyond that level. So right now, that's big to interior base. And the revenue growth did not show up to cover those revenue increases we've done, those expenditure increases we've done in prior years as well. So at this point, we are looking to, if you're going to do additional increase to schools, you would need to have to cover that because we've been covering it in the past, about well above the revenue growth rate in the last five years or so.
So it's actually about the previous years, not?
Right. Not just this growth rate. Yes, ma'am.
Because y'all, when I'm looking at the revenue growth, I'm seeing 4% revenue growth and 3.52% unrestricted revenue growth. So really, this tax increase, if we?
Needs to cover prior year allocations. Yes, ma'am.
The 4% is, includes the tax increase now.
The, the 4% you have listed on here includes, thank you for clarifying that. So what, what is the revenue growth without the tax increase?
Right around 1%.
But you can understand the reason for the question, right? It's like, so for last year, we had enough fund balance, right, to meet our policy, and then our revenue's growing by more than this, and we're giving the schools, you know, not more than that. So on the face of it, with just that information, it sounds like, well, you know, it's a tight year, but we could, we can afford that, assuming we kind of apply the same growth, you know, to other parts of our budget. But I think the simple way of thinking about it is, there's a lot of different moving parts that make it a bit more complicated than that.
Specifically, no growth in revenue, being a flat year for revenues.
All right, commissioners, other questions for tonight? We've had a lot of budget work sessions on this, and we will be talking about it more. So anything else for this evening? Okay. Thank you for the presentation. We look forward to talking further at our next meeting and the public hearing.
Thank you. And I will thank the chiefs for being here as well. Thank you, chiefs.
All right. Commissioners, um, we are moving to new business, and the first item under new business is the second reading on the solid waste franchise agreement. And Dane Peterson is here to help us with this item.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, good afternoon. My name is Dane Peterson, Boncombe County Solid Waste Director, and I am here requesting this board approve the second reading of the franchise agreement with FCC Environmental Services LLC. So the term of this agreement is seven years with a one-year extension option. And the basic service parameters of the contract is weekly trash collection and every other week recycling collection in the unincorporated, unincorporated areas of Boncombe County for residents that elect to use this service, subscribership wise. So some of the high-level points of the process to, to where we got to where we are tonight. Again, May 7th, this board approved the first reading of the contract, and we are back this evening to request the approval of the second reading. So subscriber rates, the basic service rate for the, for the new contract is $28.65 per month. Premium service, the upgraded service for backdoor services, $59 per month. The bulky waste pickup service, that's a scheduled, think about your refrigerator couches, bulky items, that's scheduled through FCC, that's $25 per, per item. The bear carts, two options on that, $320 for a purchase, or a, a lease option on that at 1016 per month for subscribers. Additional cart is $12 per month. If you want, if a subscriber wanted to elect to add another cart to their service, $12 per month for that. The disability program is the same rate as basic service. That's where, if a subscriber does not have anybody in the household that's able to move the carts from their household to the collection point, if they provide a doctor's note to FCC, they'll provide that premium service at no additional charge to basic. The low-income pro, program is based around the information FCC provided to us programming-wise, and that is 15% off of basic service price per month. And that's limited to 700 eligible subscribers that qualify for this, and that threshold is the 150% federal poverty level or, or receiving federal assistance. The additional bag service, so those are bag tags that subscribers can buy for additional flow, additional volume on the, on the waste side. And those tags per bag can be purchased through FCC at $3 apiece. So restating the recommendation before you, commissioners, staff recommends second reading approval of the solid waste franchise contract with FCC Environmental LLC. And as a reminder, this second reading will make that agreement effective, and the, the services for the new contract would begin January 1st of 2025. So I am happy to try to answer any questions you might have.
Dane, will you clarify? I had a question from someone about the bear carts, and if they already have bear carts, they don't need to purchase another one. Is that correct?
That's correct. Yes, ma'am. If those bear carts were purchased through the, the current service provider, those will be honored. There's potential that there may be a sticker or another decal placed on those carts, but they would not need to purchase a new cart through the new provider, through FCC.
Okay, thank you.
All right, commissioners, any other questions? Or a motion?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the recommended franchise agreement. Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, Dane, thank you.
Thank you, commissioners.
Okay. The next item on the agenda is consideration of a budget amendment. Fund 100 permits for demolition, demolition of two structures. And Bob Haynes is here to help us out with this item.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'd like to discuss a budget amendment for two structures located at 1599 and 1603 Barnersville Highway. These structures have been condemned four years ago, and then they were damaged when Hurricane Fred came through substantially more. The owners have not complied with any of the orders that we gave. So we actually did a court order, and the judge ruled in our favor for them to demolish, and they have not done so. So we wish to proceed the funds to demolish the structures ourselves.
Great.
It consists of two commercial properties, which are again located at 1599 and 1603 Barnersville Highway. One of them is a brick and block building, the other one is a wood frame structure. They're zoned open use. This area is located in the water supply for, we reveal is drinking water. The entity of both properties are located in a special flood, and it was a lot of work that was performed by the owners that was illegal, and a lot of that contributed to a lot of flooding when Fred came through to adjacent properties. Again, these go back to 2020. There have been recent fires as of last year in the, one of the structures. We had all the power removed from both structures in 2020. So I'm not sure how the fire started, if I want to answer that, if y'all have a question about that. They were also deemed substantially damaged after Fred come through, even before we did the condemnation. There are some photos of the structures. It is not as bad as these are right now, but it's pretty close. And as you can see, during Fred, the septic tank even got put into the middle of Ivy River. We're just asking for a budget amendment for $83,851. That would come from our revenue, which has exceeded That would come from our revenue, which has exceeded our projected this year, so there would not necessarily be any money coming from the general fund this time.
Bob, are these properties there close to the bridge where we're having to redo that bridge right there in Barnersville?
Yes.
Okay, and all of that project?
Yes.
Okay.
So we just ask for that approval of that.
Moving to approve the budget amendment as presented.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, the next item is consideration of budget amendments, funds 343 and 224 Affordable Housing Services Program allocations and GEO bond project commitments for FY '25.
Good evening, commissioners, joined by Chloe Donahoe to share the funding recommendations for the Affordable Housing Service Program and the Affordable Housing Bond Program. As you're familiar, the Affordable Housing Service Program is focused on providing affordable housing opportunities to low and moderate income households throughout Buncombe County. So the program is designed to provide rent and homeownership opportunities, preservation of naturally occurring affordable housing, trying to achieve functional zero homelessness, and to leverage the available housing vouchers available in the community. To that end, a number of goals were adopted, targeting an increase in the number of available rental units for households at or below 80% AMI, as well as homeownership opportunities, home repair programs, and as well as tenant-based rental assistance. So as the Affordable Housing Committee reviewed applications for this year's cycle, there were recommendations to support 688 additional units that would be affordable for rent, as well as five affordable units for homeownership, supporting a down payment assistance program that would equip four households to obtain homes with that resource, as well as 161 emergency repairs for homeownership, or for homeowners who have issues with the homes that they consider affordable now. And then supporting community programs that would provide rental assistance resources, particularly those who are either facing eviction, facing homelessness, or fleeing domestic violence. Just to take a look at what those goals look like, some of those, the target for rental units for households at or below 80% of AMI, the goal by 2030 would be to add 1,850 additional units with the recommendations made, which we'll walk through in a moment. That would increase that by, again, 688 additional units that would be affordable through both the Affordable Housing Service Program allocation and the bonds. Looking at homeownership, that target was 400 additional units over the next couple of years. With this round of requests, the committee recommended programs that would support nine additional units, inching a little bit closer towards that target. And then looking at home repairs, with a goal of 500 units, so far, that has already, that goal has already been achieved, and the recommendations would add 161 new units to that, to that pool. So to make all of that possible, the committee recommended reallocating $3,122,792 from previously unused funds from FY '22, '23, and '24 to support 10 affordable housing projects. They would also extend $10,294,195 of previous projects funded through the bond program, plus allocating $15,587,436 to six new projects that would be funded through the, through the bond. So at this point, I will walk you all through the, the funding recommendations associated with the Affordable Housing Service Program funds, and then Chloe will summarize the bond-funded programs and those recommendations. So for the Affordable Housing Service Program, the available balance from FY '23 and FY ' '24 was $3,577,940. Again, there were 10 projects across the available eligible program types that would support the county's goals. Those projects totaled $3,122,792, leaving that unspent balance at $455,148. So to take a look at the projects, just a quick summary of the recommended programs, the first two were under the emergency repair grants. This would provide those health and safety repairs and upgrades to homes for accessibility, Asheville Habitat for Humanity, and Mountain Housing Opportunities. Habitat was recommended for $574,000 and to impact 82 households, while Mountain Housing Opportunity was recommended for $400,000 to assist 40 homeowners with repairs. These programs are generally targeted at a general population, but typically serve households with older adults or those with disabilities who might have access issues in their homes. For the other two emergency repair grants, Collaborative Villamilpa, their Poder Emma program was recommended for $252,000 to assist 24 households. This program specifically targets mobile home repairs in the Emma and Irwin communities, so they really have a strong focus there. The United Community Development Corporation in North Carolina, they were recommended for $60,000. This program would assist 15 households with home repairs, and their focus is on BIPOC households. Then we have tenant-based rental assistance grants. Edlin Charities was recommended for $126,000. Their project provides that rental assistance to households that are at risk of homelessness or facing eviction, and they target serving 150 community household, households in the community. And the Ark of Buncombe County was recommended for $25,000. They would propose to assist 37 households with a strong focus on residents with intellectual and developmental disabilities, so helping stabilize those households where they are with affordable housing. Following that, HelpMate is recommending, is requesting funding to construct a new emergency shelter assisting those who are fleeing domestic violence. This would expand on their current work and almost double the capacity of their current shelter, so they would be creating 25 new non-congregate units that would accommodate 43 beds to assist people fleeing domestic violence. The committee recommended $300,000 for that project. For down payment assistance, Asheville Area Habitat for Humanity, their project aims to provide those up to 10% of the cost of an affordable home as down payment assistance. It's a loan that's 0% interest deferred until that homeowner sells their home for whatever reason. And the committee recommended $146,000 for that project to support four households. And similarly, Habitat for Humanity has requested funding to support their Glen Bridge project, and this was a previously funded new construction project that was adding 29 new homes in the community. And this request would expand that to buy an additional five homes, and the committee recommended $136,954. So this project would help not only construct those five new units, but then that investment would then be converted to down payment assistance, again, at, at no interest and deferred for that, for that homeowner. And then finally, for the Affordable Housing Service Program, the Star Point project, this is units constructed, 60 units constructed for rent by Mountain Housing Opportunities. The previous funding for this project was at a $500,000 investment from the county. They have requested additional support, as well as seeking to leverage tax exemption to help make that project happen. Additionally, the project has 12 units of that 60 units that are targeted to youth that are aging out of foster care, so help with that population. The committee recommended $1,102,838 to support Star Point. That, I will let Chloe provide the update on bond funds.
Okay. To summarize the bond-funded projects, recommendations, so there's $36,308,357, it's the balance of the Affordable Housing Go Bond Funds. Two of the projects that were recommended are continued loans, so those are existing affordable housing bond projects that the committee recommended, continuing that loan and providing the same amount within the fiscal year '25 Affordable Housing Services Program. The Laurel Wood Project is also an existing project, but has been funded with Affordable Housing Services Program general funds in the past, so this would be establishing a new bond-funded project for that, for that project. And then there's three new, new, new construction projects that would be established, that are recommended to be established within the bond funds. And so the total for those project recommendations is $25.8 million, and that would leave the remaining bond funds to be $10.4 million. So just to summarize, as Jonathan did for, so the Laurel Wood Project is, the developer is Volunteers of America. This is a combined rehab and new construction project that would construct 104 senior units for seniors. And the committee recommended $800,000 for this project, which is just, which is the same amount as last year, but would be establishing it within the bond funds. And this project is located in the city of Asheville. The next project is Rocky River Apartments, located in Woodfin. This project is 120 units, multifamily, one through four bedrooms, and got the, less than 80% AMI. And for this project, the committee recommended $7,889,950. The next project is Pine Lane, and this developer is Roar's Company. This project is a 126-unit multifamily project located in the city of Asheville. It's again, one through four bedrooms, and it's less than 60% AMI for those units. And the committee is recommending $6,517,699. And then the next project is Lofts at Swananoa, and the developer is WDT Development. This project is a 52-unit development for seniors, and it's located in Swananoa. The committee is recommending $379,787 for this project. And then this is the recommended motion and requested action that we're bringing to you all to approve the budget amendment, establish the Affordable Housing Services Program fiscal year '25 as a project, and establish a new affordable housing, establish the new affordable housing go bond projects. But we wanted to open it up, too, if you all have questions before you consider this motion.
Commissioners, questions?
One I have. When I look at the emergency repair grants, I see where one, it's, let me put my glasses on to help. It says percent of funds for admin, it's zero, then another is 20%. I see one, five, 12, another zero. Why is it that some can do a zero and others charge admin? Is that normal?
Some of the programs receive other funding, and they cover those, cover those admin expenses with other sources. They also may factor their admin costs into the management of those projects. So it kind of depends on the organization and their funding sources.
I think part of it is how they report it. Like, I don't think they're as different as those numbers might say, but it's sort of the way they describe it to us. And as long as they describe it in a way that's reasonable, you know, we sort of accept their numbers, but it's probably, probably not so different, would be my opinion.
Been out of banking almost 15 years, and nothing's changed. Yeah.
I just, I don't have any questions, I have a comment.
Yeah, makes a good job.
I just think, I'm gonna be dramatic for a second, so bear with me, but if I think back to like 2015, Buncombe County was spending, I think it was 600K roughly annually on housing.
Was it that much?
Yeah, just barely, and so we've just come a long way as a county, as a government, and I'm gonna get even more dramatic. You know, there's people that, in the community that I think feel like no one cares about the cost of living, just generally no one around here cares, and, you know, there's, there's American, just general distrust in institutions and government ability to do things and build things, and this is, I'm just really proud and excited, this is us showing.
Should be, yeah.
Showing people that like, we can make a difference, and, and 10, what is it, 10, no, $13.5 million roughly investment in repairing existing housing stock and creating new housing stock over the next couple of years is just gonna make a huge difference, and it's something we should all be really proud and excited about. You know, to me, to kind of maintain our economy and our basic kind of community standard of living where people of all ages and incomes can live here, we need to do three things. We need to maintain our housing stock, we need to legalize housing in Irwin, Asheville, and we need to, we, the government, build a lot more housing. And the third one should be the hard part, but we're like, we're doing it, we're getting there, and we're making a difference. And so, I don't know, I'm proud and excited, and I guess I'll make, turn that rant into a motion.
Please.
To, to approve this.
Second.
All right, we shouldn't think.
Thank our staff who spend countless and exorbitant hours going through those proformas and working back and forth with all of the folks that we see on this list, and then working with the three of us to answer all of our questions so that we can make the best and most informed decisions, and I think we have a great committee and have some great recommendations. And to kind of tag along with what Commissioner Sloan said, we're doing incredible work, and we're now seeing apartments and rental units open. I have a colleague who lives in one of these particular affordable housing complexes, and I saw her on campus the other day, and she was in tears when she saw me, I hadn't seen her in a while, to thank Buncombe County for being able to support that affordable housing complex so that she and her kids had a safe and affordable place to live. And when you see that, and when you hear those stories, it really brings it into reality why this work is so important across Buncombe County. And these are faces we know that we may not know that we know, but we're impacting people all across Buncombe County, and I'm really proud of the work that we're doing, particularly alongside my colleagues, Chair Newman and Commissioner Sloan.
And it surprised me, the number of developers, yeah, yeah, they showed up. Yeah, they sure did, yeah.
I wholeheartedly agree, and I definitely want to thank the three of you that serve on this committee and all the time and effort you've been into it, as well as staff, so thank you, this is really exciting to see all of this come into fruition.
I'll just chime in, just, you know, just looking at the pipeline of projects here, you know, when we were talking about doing the bond referendum and taking that idea to the community for consideration, you know, we were talking about, you know, the need to double or triple the amount of new, really affordable homes and apartments that are built every year in Buncombe County, and that seemed like such a, you know, far-fetched idea in a lot of ways, you know, how could you, how could you double that, or do more than that? You know, before we, before we did the, before the community supported this bond referendum, you know, there's this one state program that we always participated in, every year, we'd build about maybe sixty or seventy units typically, and that was like the, the one, the one, you know, significant project that would happen each year, and we would support that. But, you know, we're looking at, you know, we're looking at on this list of projects, it's over on this one page, not even counting the home repair, which is touching a huge number of families and properties, but just in terms of new construction, you know, over, over six hundred units, and these, these projects are in good locations, well-thought-out projects with great partners. So, it is really, it is really exciting to just see this much progress, and these projects are all, you know, they're all challenging, you know, they all have a lot of, you know, they're complex projects, so we appreciate all the partners who are working hard to bring them forward and get them across the finish line, but it's exciting to see that our strategy is being implemented and it's really working, so thanks to everyone, thanks for the people of Buncombe County for supporting these investments, they're gonna make a huge, a huge difference in this issue that's just seems to have gotten worse and worse year after year, but this strategy is really working and really has the potential to, to turn that ship, so thanks to everyone who's been a part of it, to get it here. I'm working adds to that, thank you. All right, all right. Okay, we have a motion and second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you all, appreciate you. All right, Commissioners, the last item under new business is the Open Space Bond Allocation. Jill Carter is here to help us out with this item.
All right, again, I'm Jill Carter, and I am the project manager for the Open Space Bond. I'm here tonight to bring forward a request for board action to approve a budget amendment allocating roughly ten point seven million dollars in open space bond funding for two county projects. These projects are the Ferry Road Open Space Project and Deverview Mountain. I'll quickly go over the request for each project, as well as the implications for the remaining bond funding available. The first project is the Ferry Road Open Space Project. The Ferry Road Community Project includes affordable housing, market rate housing, community services, conservation, and outdoor recreation, all on one site. The last two components, the open, the conservation and the outdoor recreation, are what we are referring to as the Ferry Road Open Space Project. This project includes over seventy acres of conserved land, that covers woodlands, a wetland, as well as several thousand feet of tributaries into the French Broad River. The outdoor recreation component would provide for the development of roughly two miles of greenway and one point seven miles of natural surface trails, and these amenities would be accessible to the public via three trailheads and roughly twenty parking spaces. The total cost for the Ferry Road Open Space Project is seven million dollars. The county received a grant from the TDA Lift Fund totaling four million dollars last month, which brings our remaining funding needed to three million dollars, and that is how much we are requesting from the Open Space Bond for this project tonight. The second project we are bringing forward is the Deverview Mountain Project. This project includes roughly three hundred and forty-five acres in the Deverview neighborhood. The project's site is currently privately owned, and Southern Appalachians Highlands Conservancy is raising funds to acquire the property with the intention to transfer it to Buncombe County for the development of a passive recreation park. The total cost for the development of this park is seven million six hundred and seventy-one thousand seven hundred and sixty-four dollars. One point four seven million of that total would go towards the due diligence or pre-construction cost for the development of the park. This includes things like the appraisals, site assessments, as well as preliminary design. The remaining six point two million dollars would be for the actual Phase One construction. This Phase One construction includes the necessary infrastructure to open a base level park to the public. And so, that brings our total funding request for Deverview Mountain to seven million six hundred and seventy-one thousand seven hundred and sixty-four dollars. So, together, these two funding requests come to about ten point seven million dollars, as I mentioned before. As you know, the total bond funding available was thirty million dollars. This commission has already approved three projects to be bond-funded totaling one point seven million dollars. Additionally, we have some known projects that are going to be coming before this commission over the next fiscal year, and those known commitments include the Anka Heritage Trail, as well as a number of conservation easement projects. Those known anticipated commitments total seven point two million dollars. If approved, the Ferry Road Open Space and Deverview Mountain allocations would bring the total known commitment from the Open Space Bond to nineteen point six million dollars, leaving ten point four million remaining. So, again, our request for board action tonight is to approve a budget amendment allocating the roughly ten point seven million dollars in open space funds for these two projects. And with that, I'll open for any questions.
All right, thank you.
I'll share that I'm supportive of this with a couple of recommendations, that we still continue to aggressively go after other funding sources to help with both of these projects, so that we wouldn't necessarily need to utilize all this funding, so it would free it up for other projects as well, so I'm supportive in that way. And then, also specifically with the Deverview Project, that we look at how we could expediate that project, too. I know we had a discussion around that last time with the timeline, and so, I would appreciate y'all looking at, if there's some other ways that we could go about this that would expediate that.
Thank you.
So, with that, I will make a motion to approve the budget amendment to allocate open space bond funding for Deverview Mountain and Ferry Road Open Space.
I think Martin beat you to it, yeah. All right. Commissioners, a motion and second, further discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, great presentation, thank you so much. Great projects, we're excited. Okay. We have a few board appointments to take a look at. I think they're all reappointments. First is EDC, there's three reappointments.
To reappoint Jay Richardson, Carol Steen, and Greg Lowe to the EDC.
All in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right, Health and Human Services, there's one reappointment, or appointment, oh, it's an appointment. I'll recommend Casey Metcalf.
Second.
All in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? And on the Greater Asheville Regional Airport Authority. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, Commissioners, thank you, thanks to everyone who serves on our boards and commissions. Any updates from county commissioner, boards and commissions? Already talked about housing a lot, so, any else to share tonight? Okay, all right, great. We have a couple of announcements, on June fourth at three PM, the county commissioner's briefing will be held at two hundred College Street, room three two six, on the first floor conference room in downtown Asheville. Don't forget, first floor. June fourth at five PM, the county commissioners will hold their regular meeting at two hundred College Street, room three two six, in downtown Asheville. I don't think we have a need for a closed session this evening, so that concludes our agenda. Is there a motion to adjourn? Second, all in favor say aye. Aye, any opposed? All right, thank you all.